They had another round of chemotherapy last week. At least she faced that. She said she'd be in the thing on. She had never. Where are you going to?
Somewhere down in Pennsylvania.
Are you hoping we're gonna retire today? That's today. I got an email on this. They, uh, Mayor Steve Riley, they've got the bridge and then Chief Stan, Stan. Got the third floor expansion. I'll be there.
Chief?
Sir, what's going on?
I'm gonna ask Eddie where he was at.
Ask who? Eddie?
Yeah.
He didn't keep up with me.
I called him, I said, where the two brothers at?
The only, the only thing that he does is knock down trees.
I don't think he does that. Mother nature does that.
Welcome to the Glasgow City Council meetings for tonight. Let's begin with a place of honor. Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, civil, liberty, and justice for all. May standing councilman. That's our education.
Yes, will you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the many blessings that you give us each day, Lord. I thank you for each person represented here. Give us wisdom, give us clear minds, help us to make good decisions for the citizens of Glasgow. Appreciate all that the people do here with their time that they give back to the city. God, we just thank you for all you do for us and all the many blessings that we see and we don't see. In Christ's name, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Brett Askey, City Mayor. Senator, I want to explain that Councilman Tasty Flower is not here tonight. She is hunting the weather. She is very much here with us live via cell phone. She's gonna be joining us via Zoom. She is not going to be voting tonight, but she is here to keep up with all the activities of the council. So with that being said, Mona, would you please call her up?
Benel.
Present.
Gottes.
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Marion.
Here.
Neil.
Here.
Norris.
Here.
Trigg.
Here.
Witcher.
Here.
Yes. Okay, alright. Okay, alright. Thank you for calling the roll and thanks for everybody being here. Uh, next thing we need to do is to approve the agenda that was sent out to you back on Thursday so we can move forward. I will entertain a motion that we proceed with the evening's activities based on the agenda that you were sent last Thursday.
Motion Kirkpatrick.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now let's approve the minutes from our meeting back on April the 22nd. You have had those since Thursday, had a chance to read over them and I would entertain a motion to approve them or if there are problems or corrections that we need to make into the minutes, please let us know about those, okay?
Motion.
Okay, that was Councilman Marion with a motion.
Second Benel.
Second by Councilman Benel. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you all very much and welcome. We have another exciting evening here tonight because we are going to introduce another new member of the Glasgow Police Department. And we have Chief Howie, who is here with us. And we also have. I think it's down there. We've got a little Zoom issue here. So appropriately enough, the puppy's name is Chaos. Uh, which is like what we're doing here, trying to get started tonight. But I really want Chief Howie to introduce Chaos and his handler, Jordan Saltzman. This is gonna be fabulous, sir, go ahead.
Well, we'll see how fabulous.
Okay, alright.
Well, thank you, folks. Uh, tonight I wanted, first I want to introduce Jordan Saltzman, police officer. He's been with us a little over two years. He was with, previously he was with Western Kentucky University. And he's bringing up, as you all heard, Chaos. I don't name him, I just buy him. But Chaos is a puppy from the Netherlands. He is a single-purpose, four odor narcotics canine detection dog. He is trained with heroin, meth, marijuana, and cocaine. Uh, he completed his four-week certification course in Gallatin, Tennessee, uh, through K-9 Command. And I think he's gonna be a great asset to our department and as we try to increase our drug arrest and the drugs coming in to our community. And, uh, he's gonna do a great job for us. This will bring our K-9 team strength up to two. I have a vision of moving that forward even, even more. So ladies and gentlemen, Jordan Saltzman and Chaos.
Alright, hey.
What's going on?
Hey, Officer Saltzman, would you introduce your guests that you have in the audience tonight in addition to Chaos?
That's my Otis, Adam Parker, youngest Axel, my daughter Jessica Saltzman, my wife and mother Saltzman.
Well, thank you all for being here. This is a special time. We appreciate, we appreciate the service of Officer Saltzman and appreciate his dedication to the K-9 unit. And it's just very exciting to have him here tonight. That's right, a lot of energy in it. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. Thank you all for being here as well. Alright, we have some presentations to be made tonight. This is my favorite time of the year because the, we have, uh, different departments of the city that are gonna present their annual report. And we have some good reports coming up here tonight. And I'm going to call, let's see, I believe is it's gonna be the Department of Public Works and Jim McGowan as our first presenter tonight. Come forward, Jim, because we have a lot to learn about a very big city department, sir.
How's everybody doing this evening? We're, we've got a little presentation together here that, uh, basically it's, uh, from July 1st, 2023 to about last, Wednesday, Thursday, June 8th and 9th, 2024. We're gonna be going over the transits, street departments, stormwater, sanitation. Glasgow Transit System began.
Move that mic closer to you.
The Glasgow Transit System began serving Glasgow in November 1994. Uh, Lenee Coe is our current transit manager. The, uh, we have a 50-50 grant fiscal year, uh, 2024. We provide free rides, uh, basically doctor's appointments, pharmacies, grocery stores, social service offices, community relief, community action, et cetera. Uh, we have 21 stops. It takes approximately an hour and a half to make, make one round through the town. We, we keep doing that throughout the day, through our time that we run. The driver, uh, this year we, we started the driver wheel DBA a quarter of a mile from, from a regular route for passenger pickup and drop off. Of course, everyone has to call in, schedule that like a day or, they're so ahead of time. But, uh, number of riders, August 2022, the afternoon route was added back. Passenger averages 750 per month. Glasgow Transit also offers wheelchair and walker lift access for disabled passengers. Our most popular stops are TJ Pavilion, Mayfield Plaza, Walmart, Transit Maintenance, uh, building, okay. These are items that we actually did at Transit Building this time. We, we put in insulation and ceiling tiles. Train the CTAA pass, it's a Passenger Assistance and Safety Sensitivity Training. We have to go through that, uh, annually. CPR training, of course, first aid training, we do that on a regular basis. Dealing with difficult passengers is part of this, this training as well. And, uh, we have the National RTAP, which is the Rural Transit Assistance Program. Uh, we provide services to community events, uh, like the Harvest of History Youth Community Projects, uh, Economic Development, Groove and Glow, things like that. On holidays, we run Martin, Martin Luther King Junior Day, President's Day, Juneteenth, and Veterans Day. Uh, we have the ability to actually see this bus in real time with our GPS tracking device we have. And we, if you, if you call in, you can actually, we, we can tell you exactly where that bus is at in real time, so. Moving along, are you, uh, is there any questions on the Transit, Transit portion? If not, I'll move into the Street Department. We have, our, uh, Street Department consists of a mowing crew, which runs five days a week, April, April through November is basically on the mowing season. We, we mow in the right of ways, city properties. In 2024, we, we started with Odd, Odd Fellow Cemetery. Start mowing it again. Trojan Trail and Highway 249 multi-use path will be added to that this year. We also mow the Police Department. As far as our, um, construction goes, the concrete, we, we do, uh, sidewalk repairs. We try to make sure everything's ADA compliant. We look at trip hazards, repair those, uh, put in new entrances and street cuts. Currently, we've got a sidewalk project going on. It's the North Green Sidewalk Project. That's, that's a photo of the side of it there, other on the side, so. City maintenance, we, uh, we take care of the Glasgow City Square, uh, the parking structure. Uh, Streets, the Street Sweeper runs Monday through Friday, 4:00 AM to noon. Uh, last year, we, uh, collected 198 tons of, of, uh, trash out of streets, basically what's the amounts to. We, uh, clean up the right of way. The litter pickup that we have was, uh, we collected 10.1 tons of just litter that we picked up on the sides of roads in the, in the streets. During leaf season, we picked up 175 tons of leaves this time, which is kind of down from last year, but we, we're thinking it's a dry season, the leaves actually fell quicker and laid as many of them this time. But, uh, we do edging, uh, we take care of the signage throughout the town. We, uh, spray pesticides, herbicides, we do pothole patching, snow and ice removal, and we do the Christmas tree pickup, like we've been doing. Citywide cleanup was usually in March. Uh, we just had that, uh, city had 131 tons that we logged and the county had 190 tons. The, uh, household hazardous waste, uh, took place last August, uh, we do that. The events rope closures were always, uh, actually closed the streets down and, uh, Christmas break cleanup, we'll run the street sweeper through and we've got guys that comes through with, uh, leaf blowers and gets the street cleaned back up after that. Uh, we prepare parking for all the events and, uh, and that, that includes the Entertain Glasgow meetings. It's some, some of the work that we've done, uh, this year, uh, throughout, um, the city, we actually worked for other, other departments too whenever they needed. One of the things we did at the cemetery, we done some, um, Storm, Storm to Bird cleanup and some earthwork out there. Parks and Recreation Department, we installed, uh, Richardson Field temporary bleacher pads. We play baseball this time. Beaver Creek Park Pavilion, uh, bathrooms, earthwork, sidewalk mulch out there. We actually transported the mulch to the side with our dump trucks. City hallway, take care of the parking lot back here. We, we actually numbered the parking spots and striped them and had all that done. It's looking really nice now. At the Police Department, we've been doing mowing. I think it's the second time I've said that through this exhibit, but, uh, we do the trimming and we, we actually did some earthwork for them at the shooting range this time. At the Fire Department over on Cross Street, we, uh, improved some drainage that they had. Had a little bit of wet ground behind it and took care of the drainage issues there. We take care of the parking garage and the crosswalk at, at the plaza, so. The Cultural Center, we took out the concrete dock for sanitary sewer repairs. We've got some pictures on there over there on the right of Richardson Stadium, so. Here for bleacher pads while we were building those. There's some photos of the Beaver Trail restroom and Pavilion sidewalks that we poured. And that, down to bottom is the Cross Street Drainage out at the Fire Department, I mentioned. Purchases that we did this last year, we had the, we purchased a backhoe, we purchased a tractor and bush hog, two crew cab work trucks. I don't know if you see one of them there, but the other ones, pretty simple to it. Uh, we, we bought a used dump truck, uh, used bucket truck and a truck mounted welder. Glasgow Stormwater Department, we, uh, it's basically municipal separate storm sewer system, which is the MS4, Glasgow is MS4, uh, city, so. We're responsible for the regulation of polluted stormwater runoff discharge to untreated local water bodies. State permits, we do the public education outreach, public involvement and participation, list discharge detection and elimination, construction site stormwater runoff control, post-construction stormwater management and pollution prevention and good housekeeping. The Stormwater Department, we, we, uh, there, there is two employees dedicated to stormwater. Uh, we, we maintain the drainage infrastructure, installation of drainage infrastructure. You'll see it's putting in head walls and wing walls and maintain ditch lines, install driveway tile. Some of the, some of the larger in-house projects that we've done this time, we, we've done some drainage, uh, repairs on Reynolds Road and Bravo Drive, uh, installed a lot of drainage tile throughout the city. It's just, uh, waste is pretty large, but right of way drainage ditches and storm drainage maintenance. One of the, uh, big purchases, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip over to the right here. One of the big purchases that we had this time was a Jetter trailer. And that's what actually helps us clean out these storm, storm drainage pipes. We got a lot of pipes gets filled up with gravel and sand throughout the year. I mean, you, you can clean them out now and in, in, um, two months later, they'll be, they'll be filled back up again. This, this piece of machinery really helps us do stuff like that, so. Back over to the left, the capital projects that we have going on, that is the Village, Village Circle Drainage Project. It's actually, uh, under construction right now. We are currently looking at for this next fiscal year, the, uh, the, uh, Bravo Drive drainage. We're, we're gonna be reviewing it here in the next couple of months. And, um, gotta keep skipping around here. The other perks that we had was a skid steer and a Santa Siren in the Stormwater Department. This is some pictures from, uh, the Village Circle Drainage Project at the top. We've actually got a pipe located on site and photo all the way to the right. It's when we loaded that, we, we actually had this storm pipe stored at the landfill and that's, shows it loaded back up, getting ready to go to the drainage project itself. The Reynolds Road Drainage Project, we, there's a couple of pictures there at the bottom of what, what that actually looks like now, where we, uh, redid that last, last fall, so. A lot of work there. The Sanitation Department, uh, we have, uh, three sanitation routes, Monday through Friday, 7,500 dumpsters weekly, double garbage after holidays, we had 5,296 tons. Deliver and pick up dumpsters daily. We've, we've got a guy dedicated that does, does stuff like that. One recycling route, Monday through Friday, commercial cardboard recycling pickup. And Saturday recycling is on, uh, the first and third Saturdays. And we had 283 tons this last year, so. That's all I had right now. Questions or? Any?
Questions for, uh, Jim or anybody with a DPW? We've got, uh, Wes Billingsley here, we got Nick Miller here from a DPW. They can answer any questions you might have. I'm gonna ask one question just because it needs to be clarified, Jim. Let's say that we have a bad storm and water is running somewhere where we never have seen it run before. Who do you think the citizens should report that to?
Citizens should be, be able to, uh, report that to dispatch or, or DPW directly, but if it's after hours like it was last week during, during, uh, those storms that we had, dispatch would actually need to be, uh, notified with that. They can, they can contact the proper ones here within the city to actually get that took care of.
Okay.
Jim, sometimes the common question we get is how long will the cemetery spaces last? Uh, that's probably a common question that I get. But overall, I think we can see the scope of the work is just amazing, really. Our, our department does a great job.
Really appreciate that. Oh, the cemetery spaces, Paul, you, you went away here a while back. We, we got what, uh, how many, how many, how many do we have left as far as the?
Approximately 1,500.
1,500? And according to the amount of time that, that what's, what's typically been used? I was, I was wanting to say 30 to 35 years, that's what he had said before.
We're not in a hurry, Paul.
We don't have anything else, we'll turn over to the landfill. Nick, you wanna come up?
This is our Director of the Landfill, Mr. Nick Miller.
As you, uh, these numbers that, uh, we receive, these numbers that you'll see as we go through here will be from July 1st to May the 9th of 24. So, uh, we accept waste from 13 counties. Uh, we have to stay in compliance with, uh, Energy Environmental Cabinet, the Division of Air, Division of Water. We have to, uh, keep our stormwater and groundwater monitored, uh, Division of Waste Management, Explosive Gas Monitoring, uh, we have to deal with Army Corps of Engineers and the Kentucky Fish and Wildlife. We also have environmental reporting, reporting that we do daily, weekly, monthly, and quarterly. All waste that's brought to the landfill is monitored for radiation, asbestos, uh, is not accepted, tires are not accepted, and running liquids are not accepted. We accept construction and demolition debris, municipal solid waste, recyclable materials, compostable materials, special waste, uh, which is sludge from wastewater and water treatment facilities. As you see there at the bottom, the municipal solid waste, so far this year, we've, uh, received 64,000, 68 tons of. 64,068 tons of municipal waste. Construction demolition debris, we've got 9,518 tons. We received 295 tons of recyclable materials. Uh, the compostable materials, we have 781 tons and special waste, we received 5,947 This year, we purchased a new roll-off truck and we got a new water truck for dust control, an excavator for daily dirt cover and we installed a generator and got it hooked up. With methane explosive gas monitoring, this is year number 11, partnered with Farmers Row Electric and Eastern Kentucky Power. Uh, as of right now, we're generating 700 kilowatts of energy per month and we're, we're up 200 kilowatts from last year at the same time. We've got 20 boundary probes that we monitor daily. We have 12 prevention wells that are burned to prevent the methane gas from leaving the site. And there you'll see three pictures of the, three aerial pictures there of the landfill. Any questions?
The 200, uh, of methane gas, when I'm 200 kilowatts?
Yes.
What is that in dollars?
Uh, Patrick, I don't have, I don't have the, that on top of my head right now.
That's up quite a bit every how much it is.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's a third more, so.
Yeah.
But y'all do pretty amazing stuff. Like that, y'all, you deserve an credit for that methane, you know, all that it does and potentially, you know, the partnership with farmers.
Yeah, it's an environmental thing. We gotta keep it, you know, we gotta get it, but all that goes back into the grid. So, I mean, we're feeding electricity back into the grid, so.
And help me if I'm wrong, but once upon a time before that, we just had to burn those wells off.
Yes.
We just had to, wasn't like we, yeah, we had to burn it off anyway, so might as well capture it and sell it back to East Kentucky Power. And, and one more thing, since I, I just wanna say that Nick's, like all the DPW employees have got a good staff, but y'all don't realize how much regulation this landfill is under. You don't know how much the requirement is, how much monitoring they have to do. It is a huge operation to keep the environment safe and to make sure that the way that they dispose of all the refuse and do these kind of things, it requires a lot of monitoring, a lot of state intervention and y'all guys seem to do really good, Nick.
Yes, we try to. We gotta stay, try to stay in compliance.
Yeah, that's right. It's big, it's big undertaking for sure.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Nick. Can I believe we have the Parks and Recreation Department next? Eddie Furlong is gonna be the next presenter.
All right, Mayor Council, thank you all for having me tonight. I'll try to go quick 'cause I know Jim took up most of my time, so. I'm just kidding. All right, so I'm just gonna roll through this. You guys know the parks that we have, that's the parks, the addresses, all the acreage and whatnot. You'll see coming soon, summer 2025 for American Legion Park. I'll talk about that here in just a little bit, but we have exciting stuff happening there as we speak. So, I like to do this little, this little skit right here. There's only been four parks directors in the history of our department. I am the second longest person here, so I keep knocking off one year at a time. Oshel's, his record's safe, I can assure you that, but we'll just see what mine gets to before I'm gone. We are fully staffed at this time, which is the first time in quite a while that we've been fully staffed, so I'm very happy with that. My crew, they're, they're just a great bunch of guys and girls and, you know, they come to work every day and, and do what we can to try to increase the quality of life for our citizens. These are some of the programs that we've offered since last year and up to this point. I wanna brag about a couple of them. Our soccer program continues to be the, the largest program that we offer. We're up to 384 kids for this spring season. That's 38 soccer teams. It's about a little bit over 20 more than we had last, last time this year in the league, but then we increased it by, let's see, eight and 11 teams. So, you know, it's just a bit, a big change and it just continues to grow. Some of the other things that we do that are always a big success are our Easter egg hunt, our Halloween festival that we put on, and then the concerts in the park that we, we help with and partner with. So, we'll, we'll see some of that as well. These are some of the different events that we do and partnerships. We have a walk gym, exercise room up at Liberty Street, cardio room. We do open gym pickleball. We've done a touch, touch truck in the past, love your parks today. We help out with the entertain Glasgow events, the banners on the square, Christmas decorations, movies in the parks, which we're bringing back next month. That'll be three months out of the summer that we're doing that with YMCA, NEMAC and the Qantas Club. We help with the Toys for Tots, Toy Drive. We do that every year, have done that for the last couple of years, and then a couple of other events as well and partnerships that we have. So, some park upgrades that we've done recently, within the last six months or so. Down at Gorham Park, we have three new pickleball courts. We kinda did a rebuild of Richardson Stadium, a temporary one, but we're getting ready to start that off here in a couple of weeks on the actual rebuild of the stadium. As Jim spoke about earlier, we've got the new shelter out of Beaver Trail. There's a new restroom facility and we have an enhanced interactive walking trail that was a partnership with a, a library. We have a new flooring for the lower gym that's coming in soon, which will include a new volleyball court and all the equipment that comes with it. And there will be three indoor pickleball courts in that gym now, or in that gym once it's done. The Garden Club did a new layout for the fountain up here on the square and I've got pictures of that to show. And then the big thing that we're talking about is the new park design and the aquatic center coming soon. So now, this is show and tell, show and tell time, so I'm just gonna show some different pictures. We're real proud of our Liberty Street Gym. You know, it's still the original wood floor. We just try to keep it in as best shape as we can and keep it looking like it does in those pictures. Day camp program, this is something that's always a huge success for us. You see our local firemen, they come out every year and help out and talk to the kids. And they go on field trips. We have special guest speakers that come by and they just have a good old time with Here's the fountain on the square that I was talking about. So, the, the Garden Club did this on their own. They asked us to do it, but they, they did it for us and it was no cost to us as, as the city, so it was a great partnership for us. Christmas tree on the square, pretty sure everybody was there for that when that took place, but that was a, a big event for us. Here's the Gorham Park pickleball. So, this is what it looked like when they put the temporary lines down. And I know we were getting a lot of flack for it at first because people thought that that's what we were presenting to them. Well, this is what they look like now. So, as of about a week ago or so, they're done. We still have some things to do, like we have some lights that are gonna be coming in soon. We have some fence work to take care of and stuff like that, but that's what they look like now. I think they're, they're pretty top notch considering we didn't spend a whole lot of money to get that done. Here's the Richardson Stadium. Street Department guys, they've been a blessing to us because we've worked hand in hand with them. They've done a lot of the work. I know some of his guys are always asking me to get a park shirt since they're always in the park so much, but we've got a great partnership with them. So, here's the, the shelter. This is one of our showcase pieces. This was built or installed late last summer and then we had our first event out there earlier this year and I have some pictures of that as well. There's some more pictures. The bottom pictures, you'll see that's the new bathroom that's out there at Beaver Trail. It's out there in the middle of the walking trail. It had its first run-through the night of the concert, so it, the, the doors opened up literally hours before the concert and it, it worked pretty good. We're pretty happy with that. Here's my guys doing a lot of the plumbing and electrical work for the, those bathrooms out there. Now, I'll give my guys credit. There's a lot of stuff that they didn't know that they needed to know when they came to work here, but they've been fortunate enough to jump in and just kinda learn those things and try to help out wherever we can to, to save the city money. Here's one of our Halloween events that we put on. We've done this at Ralphie's for the last several years. The top two and the bottom left are, are from there. And then the bottom right picture is a Halloween car show that we did last fall as well, and that was a huge success out at Beaver Creek Park. One of the great events that we did this past year was the ice skating down at Gorham Park. If you didn't come out to that, you missed it. It was a great event. It was a great partnership with River Lake Church. Believe it or not, the first night that we had it open, it was snowing, so it, it actually felt like it was winter and, and all that good stuff. But we had, I think if I remember right, we had over 1,500 people that came through that night or those three nights, and it was just a great event. So, we had the Sunday Best Concert a couple of weeks ago and that was the first run-through for the new shelter. We had a huge crowd that came out that night. I don't know the exact number, but I'm guessing about 2,000 plus people that were out there for the event. I think most of you all were out there at some point that I remember seeing at least. So, as you can tell, there was a bunch of families out there, which is a great thing for us. A lot of people out there sitting in their chairs and kids playing on the, the road out there. Just a, just a really great event. This is our Easter egg hunt. This was another partnership with River Lake Church. I know several of you were there or participated in it. It was by far the biggest special event we've ever had. You know, typically we have 1,000 to 1,500 people roll through for our Easter egg hunt. This year, and I don't know the numbers, but it was easily over 3,500 people. Parking lot and the road was just completely packed. There was way, way too many people in one of the fields, but it was a, a really great event to have that many people come out for that free event. I have a video. Let me see if it'll play. I hope so. Yep, all right. So, this is a video of the event. That is Ms. Lowery in the Easter bunny suit. So, here's the helicopter dropping the eggs. And for that event, we had 50,000 eggs that were either on the ground or dropped out As you can tell, well, it was real quick, but I was gonna say you could see the parking lot was just full of cars and the road was full of cars out there as well. And then I have one more slide and this is what's coming. Oh, hold on, there we go. Coming summer of 2025, that's American Legion Park. So, if you haven't driven by the park in the last three weeks, I, I think you need to go out there and see what's not there. It looks like a tornado's went through because all the buildings are gone, there's a bunch of trees gone, there's all kinds of excavation work that's taking place, but that's getting it ready for what's coming next year. We are getting ready to bid that out later this week, but that is the design and that's what we hope to see summer of 2025. And that's, that's all I have. I just wanted to kinda do a show and tell of the things that we've done and that are coming, and I open it up to any questions you may have.
Questions for Eddie? Eddie, I've heard, heard a lot of people talk about, about the pickleball. Have you seen a lot of people out there playing?
We have. So, the first day that we opened it, I had several people text me or call me like, hey, thank you for this. We were the first ones out there. We scored the first points, but we lost our match. So, things like that. I had somebody actually text me yesterday and like, hey, our whole church is out here playing. Thank you guys for doing this for us, so we think it's a great thing for the community.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of good stuff about that. One about Richardson Field, when do you anticipate that being done, done?
So, Jim and I and the mayor actually met earlier today. We anticipate starting early June and then as far as being done, we don't really have a timeframe, but before next season. Like, fully done before next season.
Got you. Thank you.
Other questions for Eddie? There's a lot going on in the recreation, but it's a busy department for sure.
Very busy, especially this time of the year.
And you do have an excellent staff and I know you're, I, I know you're glad, as busy as you are to be able to say that you're fully staffed, that, you know, that's very impressive too.
Yeah.
It really is.
Eddie, will the park be closed at American Legion until summer?
It will be, yes. Yeah, with all the, the demolition and then the construction going on, there's only one way in and one way out, so it's just hard to get people up in there. And then mainly the, the main road going in, a lot of that's changing anyways.
Will there be one way in and one way out after it's open?
There will be.
Okay.
Any update on the, the armored vehicle up there?
I can give you the entire update on the armored vehicle if you would like. Let me, let me give you a flow chart. The American Legion of Glasgow is in charge of that tank. They called the military in Detroit to find out what to do with it. The military in Detroit says they didn't care what you did with it, that they didn't want it. So, the American Legion thought they had found a couple of people, veterans organizations here that might have wanted it. Well, as they kicked it around within their organization, it turned out that they didn't want it. So, we had a problem of the fact that it didn't need to stay out there and hamper the construction, so we wound up, the American Legion said what they'd like to do is they would like to sell it for scrap. And so, that's what's gonna happen because it's their tank, they're the one, we don't have to bid it or anything like that. It's their tank and they said we would like to just have it sold for scrap and that's what they're gonna do with it. But it could have, it could have been difficult with, because apparently it's hard to move it and apparently it's hard to anchor it and all those kind of things, but there was a lot of people looking at it, but nobody would ever make the commitment. So, that's what we have. Other questions?
Thank you all.
All right, thank you, Eddie. Good reports. I'm very pleased with y'all's preparation for tonight and with the wonderful things that are going on and it's, it's exciting around here for sure. All right, so we're gonna keep moving down the agenda. We have some old business to undertake. Rich, would you wanna explain that to us?
This first item under old business is a municipal order appointing Joey Botts to the Barron County Economic Authority as a city representative. This will fulfill the unexpired term of Gary Hartel. The appointment is for a four-year term expiring June 1, 2025.
All right, you have heard this. This is of course the second reading of this particular municipal order. I would entertain a motion to pass this ordinance. Motion, Benell. Okay, is there a second? Okay, second by Councilman Witcher, I'm sorry, I started saying Councilman Marvin. That wouldn't work anywhere. It wouldn't be your brother who would have seconded, would it? Councilman Witcher has the second. Any discussion? If not all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Oppose. The order is approved. New business?
This is an ordinance closing the public way known as Branham Avenue in the Purebred Acres Number Four subdivision, Plaid Book 10, page 81 here in Glasgow. That whereas the Purebred Acres Number Four subdivision was developed and platted and a street designated as Branham Avenue was dedicated as a public way, but said public way as platted in 1990 was never used and instead the existing Branham Avenue has been dormant. Whereas pursuant to KRS 82.405, all of the property owners in or abutting the unused public way located off Longhorn Street, the original plaid of which is attached to Exhibit A, have consented to the closing of this public way, subject to the provision that the property contained within the public way shall revert back to the owners of the property in or abutting the public way. And whereas an affidavit pursuant to KRS 82.405 has been signed by all of the property owners in or abutting the public way proposed to be closed and those affidavits are collectively attached as Exhibit B. Now therefore be it hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow as follows. Section 1 pursuant to KRS 82.405, sub-paragraph 2, the following findings of fact are made. A, the property owners in or abutting the public way proposed to be closed are Karen Wilson, Maud T. Isen. Wilson, Maud T. Eisenberg, and Thesia Joan Edwards. B, written notice of the property proposed to be closed has been given to all of the aforesaid property owners. And C, all of the aforesaid property owners have given their consent to the closing ordained herein, and again, those affidavits are attached as Exhibit B. Section two, the aforesaid property, uh, public way designated as Branham Avenue located off, uh, Longhorn Street here in Glasgow is ordered closed subject to the following provisions. Ownership of the property contained within this public way being closed shall revert back to the aforesaid property owners according to the law of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
You've heard the first reading of the ordinance, I would entertain a motion that we put it on the floor for consideration.
Motion, Kirkpatrick.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there a discussion about this resolution? There being none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. And the first reading passes.
Next item is a resolution for the City of Glasgow to make a grant application with FEMA for breathing air systems for the Glasgow Fire Department. Be it resolved by the City of Glasgow that April Russell, grant writer for the City of Glasgow, is authorized to direct and directed to make an application on behalf of the city for a grant in the amount of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents administered through the FEMA assistance, which will be used, if received, for the purpose of purchasing, uh, breathing apparatus for the Glasgow Fire Department. If received, the local share amount will be a five percent grant in the amount of twelve thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars, sixty-seven cents, uh, for a total of two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Be it resolved by the city that Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to make, uh, all necessary documents, sign them in order to make application for the grant.
You've heard the reading of the resolution, uh, we do have, uh, Aaron Mulder with the Glasgow Fire Department here, and of course, Ms. Russell is here, too, if there's any, uh, discussion, but I, first of all, entertain a motion, uh, that we approve this particular resolution.
Motion, Benell.
Is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Okay, we're up for discussion, any questions, anybody wants to ask any of our experts who are here? If not, then we'll vote, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, resolution is approved. Rich?
This is a second application for a grant, or resolution approving a grant application for a Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services Compensation Safety Grant. Be it resolved by the City of Glasgow that April Russell, grant writer for the city, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make application for a grant in the amount of three thousand dollars administered through the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services Compensation Safety Grant, and which will be used, if received, for the purpose of personal protective equipment for public works, personal protective equipment for the Glasgow Fire Department, and personal protective equipment for the Glasgow Parks and Recreation. And I, and lastly, it will be used for a two thousand twenty-four KLC Risk and Safety Conference for the Glasgow Parks and Recreation. This grant has a matching obligation of three thousand dollars. Be it resolved by the city that Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to take all action necessary in order to make application for the grant.
All right, you've heard the reading of the resolution, I'll entertain a motion for us to, uh, pass it.
Come on.
By Councilman Neil, is there a second? Okay, from Councilman Gauntz, we've got it up on the floor, are there questions about this, uh, safety grant? If there's no discussion, then I'll, uh, call the question, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes.
The final resolution, uh, for discussion and approval is a resolution approving the auditing firm for the Glasgow Electric Plant Board. That whereas pursuant to KRS ninety-six point four zero, the Glasgow City Council is required to select the auditor for the Glasgow Electric Plant Board. Whereas the City of Glasgow Finance Committee has met and recommends to the City Council that the audit firm of Carr, Riggs, and Ingram be approved for the Glasgow Electric Plant Board, a municipal entity of the city. And whereas this is being presented to the Glasgow City Council for its approval, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council that it approves the audit firm of Carr, Riggs, and Ingram for the Glasgow Electric Plant Board.
Thank you, Rich. Uh, before this meeting, the special call meeting of the Finance Committee took under consideration this particular proposal for this firm to do the audit for the Electric Plant Board. Chairman of the Finance Committee, Chairman, or the Councilman Benell, is there anything you would like to say about the discussion that happened in the meeting prior to this meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Royce, uh, on behalf of the Glasgow Electric Plant Board, they gave us information relating to the firms, they had sent out the requests for proposals. Uh, they sent out four requests, and one was returned, that being the Carr, Riggs, and Ingram proposal. Their proposal from, uh, Carr, Riggs, and Ingram was for a three-year period, uh, they have worked with this firm, uh, in the past for approximately eight years, now talking with the superintendent of the Glasgow Electric Plant Board, they've been pleased with the services performed by this audit firm, um, and, uh, would recommend, uh, that we move forward with them, uh, and based on their work, that we've seen their work as, as a legislative body from the audit, and, uh, the Finance Committee, uh, makes a recommendation, uh, that we move forward with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram for the Glasgow Electric Plant Board.
Can we consider that as a motion to approve it?
I sure, I sure, yes, I do.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilman Kirkpatrick, is there any further discussion on this proposal?
Is this the current firm, Terry, that we're using now for them?
Carr, Riggs, yes, uh-huh.
Thank you.
I, I think it was eight years they've been, they think that they've been using them?
Yes, approximately eight years, uh-huh.
Okay, all right. Other questions? All right, all of those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, thank you very much. Uh, let's see, we have a few announcements that we wanna talk about. First of all, I just wanna say one more time, and I know I'm not supposed to brag from this chair, but I'm telling you, I'm bragging on everybody that has something to do with the two hundred and twenty-fifth birthday celebration, we had department heads, we had departments, we had Paul Bragg from the cemetery out there with a tremendous display of what his department takes care of, we had all the departments that are represented here were there, and, uh, that's, uh, for our event on Friday, we had the historical event up here, all of Mona's, uh, research and all of Mona's, uh, preparation and preservation was on display, it was absolutely wonderful, April Russell, April, let's see, she, uh, she got Seven Nations here, and I, in the choir, in the crowd, more than once or twice, some people were saying, how'd y'all get them here? And I said, well, you're gonna have to ask April because she got them here, and it was really good, and all the t-shirts and the food trucks and everything, so I think that we are, uh, on the map of having celebrated our two hundred and twenty-fifth, uh, birthday, and many, many, many folks enjoyed that, so I just, I gotta say thank you one more time. We are having a recycling day on the eighteenth, that's a Saturday, eight until eleven-thirty at the Glasgow Regional Landfield, Nick had a really nice picture up there of the new recycling shelter out there at the landfill, which is really easy to get to and really nice to unload, and y'all ought to go out there and try that. We have an Entertain Glasgow event coming up on the night of the twenty-fourth, Drake White is gonna be here on the Glasgow Square, food trucks begin at five P.M. We have some Plaza events coming up now, Friday night, they tore down the house, the, uh, Plaza was full Friday night for the Eagles tribute, and, uh, I've had so many nice compliments about the facilities, about the sound, the quality of the sound, and what a nice night it was in downtown Glasgow for that. So, the Plaza is gonna be, once again, uh, hosting, uh, Ms. Adrianne's recital, this is gonna be the twenty twenty-four recital, Dancing Through the Bluegrass at the Plaza at eleven o'clock, I'm sorry, at six o'clock on the twenty-fourth and eleven o'clock on the twenty-fifth, and we appreciate that, there's some other announcements we will get to, but you don't wanna hear me read all night, I will, uh, at this point, uh, entertain a motion for us to adjourn.
Motion, Kirkpatrick.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, thank you so much for being here.